Uh, go ahead and call me in order to start. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, and to one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Warning, warning.
Next, I can have do is approve today's agenda.
Motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that.
They're moving second day in discussion. Here none, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Here is, next is approval of the minutes of February sixth twenty three.
Lance, I'm making a motion to be approved for minutes presented for February twenty twenty three.
I'll second it.
And we can second it in discussion. Here none, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Most carries, next approval claims for payment of February thirteenth.
Make a motion to approve to February thirteenth claims for payment.
I'll second that.
Been moved consecutive in discussion. Here none, all fair say aye.
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 Moving areas, we got another forty seconds here. Have your bids come in?
No, Ashley has the.
Okay. I wanna jump down. Utility permit. There was then on that.
Under that appropriations resolution.
There he goes, consideration of pretty total permits, wind stream UT twenty three zero zero.
I have to make a motion to get through wind streams, utility permit UT twenty three dash zero zero two presented.
I'll second it.
Been moving seconded in discussion. Here none, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Most carries. Next is consideration to approve the HVAC payoff at this time. We haven't done the amendments and we need to check to see if that money is available to pay it off yet. But I would use the ARPA funds to pay that off.
I agree.
Yep.
So moving forward, we look at that.
I don't think any actual item at this point.
Uh, next is consideration to approve the IT department's credit card limit. Please.
The the basic reason behind that is is Amazon has changed their corporate things. We've always had a corporate credit. Which we do a lot of. My limit there was twenty four thousand dollars and we will be monthly use it quite a bit. Um, I know from emails I got every weekend, they they discontinued that as of January ten. Real mention that, um, we emails the other weekend with my credit cards already. So there's already certainly forty dollar charges on there for. There because it just takes way too long, right? I don't know what I've got on it now, two thousand, three thousand dollars. I mean, I've bought stuff for Thomas since eight thousand dollars at a crack on there. So I guess I'm asking to be respectable limit to because twenty grands would be probably adequate if you use the buy stuff that's paid off every month. So. One, one is your request.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve, uh, the IT department, do that. Sorry Lance, just one of the cards without them.
I only have one.
Okay, you don't have a card.
I have no card. Can I honestly try to try to use the thing? I hate credit crisis. I don't find credit is much easier, but sure.
Okay, I'd make a motion then to approve the IT department's line of credit to twenty thousand dollars on their county issued credit card.
I'll second that.
They moved seconded in discussion.
This isn't a matter of needing to spend more, it's a matter of the the credit line, your Amazon was sufficient, but they discontinued offering credit lines to their business customers. So to be able to make those purchases, the justification is to utilize the county's credit card and take it this far now, but just. So, you know, it's out there.
And all all the other departments, IT or most of the other departments for you as well. If it's IT, you definitely should. Here is discussion. Very none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries, I am still waiting for Ashley, so I'm gonna keep going. And next is consideration to approve the combination board appointees. I have Mark Paul Vance as a partner.
Okay, I make a motion to approve, uh, the addition of Mark Paul Vance, the farmer to the county combination board.
I have a second it.
It's been moved and seconded in any discussion. Still looking for three more farmers and two more realtors. Any other discussion? Here none, all fair say aye.
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 Carries. Next, we have a discussion with possible action sale of sheriff's apartment van. You wanna sell?
Wanna sell?
Two big margins right now and and there is a market.
We've already got a buyer lined up that's a bit ago, so.
And it's another county purchasing.
Correct, yes.
And you have two of them.
Correct.
And you're selling the older one, keeping the new one. And with that money, you wanna turn around and.
Buy a smaller, a lot of times we're holding one, two people in a fifty pass truck van.
Okay.
There are day. Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the, uh, sale of the older, uh, person transport van utilized by the Martin County Sheriff's Office.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. That money will stay in his budget to purchase the other car.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Here none, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Most carries. I can go to the night, I'll buy a public hearing. Which we can go ahead and open a public hearing of the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three budget amendments. There any comments from the public? Just kind of a short overview of this. Veterans Affairs even at eighteen thousand five hundred. And that's due to a full time employee. But they would need that money in their services, the general services of the courthouse is a hundred and fourteen thousand. We will use the ARPA funds for that. And that's the remodel of the basement down there.
That includes the ADA compliant bathrooms and conference room, which in the dens and women's restrooms. So they're more adequate for stall space and the ADA complacency in the bathroom.
Uh, next is the general services office building, which was four thousand hours. I believe that was part of the heater over there. Heating, cooling, um, the auditor's office is one thousand dollars. Which I don't think she's gonna need. But if we do the amendment appropriations, we just don't have to appropriate it. So it'll just roll back into next year. Uh, economic development of twenty five thousand for of lost funds for hover. On their swimming pool that we loan that 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 loan that we gave. Emergency management. Um, using the ARPA funds, twenty eight thousand, that's for that heater that we have or currently running right now, but can be used for multiple things. And then the income of one point one million dollars for of the second half of the ARPA funds. And the OPU supplement of seventy three thousand, uh, and the sale of property that counted your own grandma, the same four point one million. Like that covered everything.
Yep.
So we're in a public comment, is there any public comment? Go ahead and unmute anybody. You are able to unmute yourself if you have any comments.
Joel, did you receive anything by mail or anything? Well, here nothing, I can. I'm gonna make a motion to go ahead and tell this to the public, you know, the appropriations for the budget amendments.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to close public hearing for budget amendments. Any discussion? Here none, all fair say aye.
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 Most carries.
Lance, I have made a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three to clarify the appropriations resolution and the amounts on both, uh, expense and income as previously mentioned.
I will second it.
Been moved and seconded in discussion. The only one I would bring up with the Congress, you wanna go ahead and appropriate that? It's not needed. Um, is that correct?
What's that?
Uh, your amendment.
Right, we can do that with the justice. It's just.
Leave it in there, better motion.
Um, I'll just talk with the roll call vote. Roll call.
Lance.
May.
Renee. Nate.
Nate.
I think I'll take another motion.
Sure, I'll take the motion to approve the, uh, resolution twenty twenty three dash zero eight with the amendment to strike forty thousand three hundred twenty six dollars from the Honors Amendment appropriation amount.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Here none, roll call.
Thanks.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most carries. Oh, we need to adopt a budget. He did that earlier. All right. Do we have? Uh, let's see, next is discuss with possible action on county website.
Better, yeah, twice in one meeting, this is right. Um, okay, so is is you, most of you are probably aware from this guy, I'm switching the website vendors, uh, our current vendor, which yeah, which really is very hard to edit and maintain according to the people that have been doing it, is actually raising the prices by nineteen percent this year. So it was gonna go up considerably to roughly, I think I'd figure somewhere that I've given it before, but to twenty grand a year to keep it. So I've entertained a new company and went and signed with them. It's gonna be roughly sixteen thousand dollars to manage a website. It's much easier to get it. And the I struggle with a lot of this is is website, hard IT basically, but selling clothes into the manufacturing. And there's, and they're good, it's technology related, but it's not something, it's not definitely not in my skill set to be artsy, artsy and science stuff beautifully. Um, but we've had the ability, we've been paying for the ability to do a lot more with our website than we've been doing. So we're trying, making her trying to and Michelle has been a tremendous, um, asset to us in getting this done because she has all those traits. Um, we'll, we'll discuss that at different time, but, um, so we're trying to make it much more user friendly, much more able to service the public and to make it something where the public can actually interact with the county, um, is to be much better for tourism. We're gonna try to make it beautiful and get new stuff and we're we're getting that all done. And we signed this just two weeks ago, so it's gotta all be done by April twelfth. That's when my current contract runs out with Civic Plus. Okay, so the new company government, we're in the process of doing that. One of the things that I'm really looking to do to for better, better public services to be able to when I've already talked to Dave about it for gun permits, people can get on there, go up their, their concealed weapon permit. Submit, submit the money with the credit card right there online and boom, it's done. If they, if they get it, it's done. And if it, if it fails, then the money gets just returned to them. Uh, many other things like that, like that can happen, one for fireworks permits. Okay, we've got several different forms we're working on, I think about twenty of them at this point. Um, getting on there, some of them are just like for, for the sheriff's office, take money for room and board that the people owe and just with it, they don't have to come in, be during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, which if they work is always a challenge. Um, to be able to just do it online and the money's there. So then there's a lot more capabilities to do that conservation is, is really interested in being, do that for a lot of their camps at Hawkins and different places. Which really in the, in the name is it, it's twenty twenty degree. I mean, credit card's been the main mode of payments for twenty some years. So I'm trying to drive the website in that way to be able to service the public. So just to make you guys aware of that, and we're gonna do it, and then it will be a meeting, discussion, every questions.
I think it's about time you're up with the times.
I would agree, thank you.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Good. But what's your request you want? Uh, basically the request that I haven't, I haven't yet to talk to the, to the treasurer, she was out last week, so I'll get her there this week. But it's in, you know, I can't control what she wants to do, but just if we're on the same page, I would like to be able to be able to take the credit card payments. I know there's always been a little bit of hesitancy there. Um, and you guys can't force it either, but just that I have your blessing to that's a direction we would like to go as a county.
Oh, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
No, now I know the treasurer's office has some other system where they can take tax payments online somehow, but this would still be, they could use it or not use it for that or whatever, or.
This would be totally separate from that. That's that's my first thing, registration.
I have a tax and tax.
Yeah. Oh, all right.
Hey, you got, you, you in the permits?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. He brought you a couple times, so.
But they have warrants, we still prefer they come to the office to do any business, but anything else online is fine.
A lot easier that way, I guess it's. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think we have an action or is the action that that not area, my area expertise, so.
Yeah, I don't think there's, I didn't think it's more informative than.
Right, I think so too.
Yeah. All right. Now I'll go back to my nine oh two public hearing. Go ahead, this is a public hearing on the sale of that little piece behind counting on the ground. We can go ahead and open that. Are there any public comments on that? The ten acre piece. You wanna meet people? Or give them the capability if they have questions.
You can unmute the votes.
Well, we do that, you wanna, um, have Darryl explain what the stipulations were to be a part of today's sale then?
That we need to open the bids.
Right, right.
Uh, to participate in the auction today, you needed to turn in a bid by the end of Friday's business. And then the bidding would start at the highest bid that we received. And we'll proceed until there are no additional bids. So this is.
We received one bid.
Received one bid. I bet it's for the minimum amount that we require, two thousand dollars.
It was fifteen.
I'm gonna go. If there's no.
I, let, let, uh, have they had any written? Okay, are there any public comments? Here none.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and close public hearing.
I'll second it.
Been moving seconded, close public hearing. I got one minute. I'll call for the vote. All fair say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post carries, um, so the one bid, amen, Dean Bright at sixteen hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Obviously, we get no option now, so made Darryl's life easier.
He's been working on his cadence and everything, so.
Is, is this something we are?
Yes, I would make a motion to accept the bid from Dean Bright, the amount of sixteen hundred and fifty dollars per acre.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion.
All right, okay, thank you.
Here none, all fair say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Thanks.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most carries. I'll let Dean and Darryl figure out all the.
Does any additional surveying need to be done now or that was all wrapped up in the first? I don't remember if I'm correct. It's, it's been all surveyed, that's how we determine the ten point one acres on this parcel. Um, we will do an abstract.
Okay.
It has not been brought up. I talked to Dave Rubio and it's probably been generations since that thing's been brought up. So the county will bring that up to, to be current.
We can just include the entire, I think it's one, because I got the other part of it. We do, we shouldn't have to sort that one out and then sort this one out.
You'd like a single abstract and.
I mean, it, it, right.
It's.
Just do the.
Correct, yeah, it's, it's two.
It's up to you all. Well, it's what we did, we'll do what's.
Whatever you're right.
The, the simple, not making it more complicated than you already have.
All right, you guys got that figured out. Congratulations. Next, I'm getting moved to, uh, extensive possible act and development funding request of Steamboat Rock. Yeah. Okay. Some of you know that we're in the process.
Can I be, uh, holding assistance or what?
Okay. And then this is, I don't know, you probably, Wes is probably showing you this. For. I'm Timster, I think we're rock hill three. Um, so what we're looking at is the DOD INR, or Ryan says suggested that we put in, uh, additional parking for river usage right here. Right here for our solar panel bar, you can see our solar panel right there. This is more of those. And part of the reason that is, this is where our landing is right now, our, our, let's say. And on a busy weekend in the summer, we get about a thousand people get into the river right there. And that's, we don't have enough parking and, you know, that holds, you know, on a good day, it holds about twenty guard, thirty guard, we sometimes have forty or fifty cars there. So the DOD INRs are, then come down here and put additional parking down here. As the dam comes out, which maybe we think the first phase will be this year, it comes out, it's eight foot drop, it comes out in four phases. And between each phase, each, at that for two feet, they have to have what's called a river bottom scouring ramen net. Okay, before the next two feet come out. So it can take two years for the, to get the dam all the way out. And during that time period, they'll do things, uh, move erosion mitigation all along here in places they've got it all figured out, you know. Lance, our engineers have put all this together for us. Now, one of, I think some of the suggestions have been, why don't they put a ramp over here and park there? Whether really, you know, when you look at the flow of the rivers, you're gonna put in a parking, it needs to be on the, so to speak, the leeward side of the river so that the current doesn't wash out the ramp all the time. That being said, though, the county is gonna have a small ramp over here for their, for their planned kayak rental area. And then, and then they'll use up all that parking over there. Uh, because there's, I don't know if you've driven there lately, there's not a lot of parking over there. So. So it took us a while, uh, to get this figured out. This whole project started out like nine four. And I kept saying, this city of Steamboat Rock doesn't have any money. And I told them after two years and I kept working with the last engineer and kept boiling it down and it got it down to about two hundred and sixty five thousand, which is the sheets that I handed out. There's a full explanation where the money is coming out there. We've got, we're suggesting layers of grants uh, in there, uh, three or four layers, but the city still needs to come up with about ten thousand dollars. Additional grants now, the ten thousand dollars can be, uh, in kind payments, it can be donations. Uh, there are a number of things that could use more of it. In order to apply for the grants, um, we need to have access to that, I guess. And I, I don't think we're gonna need the full ten thousand because of donations and kind payments, but um, the grants, the grants that we're applying for are uh, one of them is Park County in the endowment foundation brand, that's so, so, so anyway, that's why I'm asking for you to help solve the ten thousand, up to ten thousand. And I don't know when we need it sometime over divorce in the next two years. And so payback over five years or something like that.
So you're just asking this committee.
Yes.
So Jim, um.
And we, and, and we have not approved this yet at our state council. So that's tonight, we're, we're presenting.
So that's about what you need to know today.
Yeah. It's, so my, uh, so previous projects, we've always had, you know, put the money up for a man matching like this with a repayment, uh, you're asking for, uh, ten thousand dollars and previously we.
This is a law.
Right, but we've forgiven like the last payment and it's been, uh, sizable compared to what you guys are asking for. And so, um, I'm, I'm going to, when Lance is ready, I'm gonna make a motion to do something similar with the city. So the cost, um, you know, what's a good thing for the city? Because I don't want to pin you guys down for something else that comes up later.
Appreciate that. So on the, on the previous ones, it was, uh, like the Legion recovered the swimming pool, the Legion of Interankled, it was four thousand five thousand dollars and we forgave the last five thousand. As payments come in, we forget the last five thousand dollars and we use the economic development loss funds for that. You're asking for ten thousand and, you know, that would be forgiven last payment, probably so two thousand dollars, or we're going with the, the five thousand as well.
And when you're ready, thanks, um, or lay something up the phone block.
Or you think Tim's gonna do it? I mean, this, this, this is money that helps you get matching funds for grants. Yeah, if you go to, uh, it's all boiled down. It's born to this base, it looks like this project funding plan two thousand five three, that's where it's boiled down. And there's the layers of grants and how, how it speaks out is, um, the source of funds.
You're right, I'm, I'm just asking, are you sure you want ten or you want four five?
Well, um, I, I think ten and I'm not sure we'll need all of that. Because.
We can say up to ten.
Yeah, up to ten. And, and like I said, our city council really hasn't approved this whole again. Um, so. But I'm just trying to be prepared for anything.
Okay.
All right, you ready?
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve a ten thousand dollar loan intention on the Steamboat Rock City Council approval with five thousand of it being forgiven uh, upon the first five one thousand dollar payments. Got an example, Tim?
Coming out of.
Lost, we're blocking sales tax money.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion.
I appreciate you coming to us and these are the kinds of projects that I believe the local auction sales tax funding that um, our residents and guests pay into that may make things viable for the community. So thank you, Tim. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Here none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, carriers, change status. I didn't have any. Other business.
I have no.
Just see, sometime in the next couple of weeks, I'll be having an agenda item regarding additional opioid litigation or just a handful of other pharmaceutical companies that are being sued into class action similar to the three that, um, you know, we participated in before. So no idea what this, you know, the size and scope is exactly yet, but there's certain opt in options that, uh, need to be acted upon by mid April. So sometime in the near future, I'll be bringing that through the board to opt in.
I have a question. Um, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, but is there any plans between law enforcement and you as far as use of the funds? I mean, what, or what we can use it for?
Nothing concrete yet, no.
Okay.
I think everybody's waiting to see who's gonna dip their toe into the waters first and see where that takes them. Because as a regional mental health board, it's come up several times, supervisors that opted in, what are you spending your money on? Well, what are you spending your money on? You tell us first and if you don't get in trouble, then maybe we'll go down that road. So I think a lot of people waiting for that. I don't know if Dave and Iowa State Sheriff's and Deputy Association has it come up, what?
No, it hasn't come.
Yeah.
We're waiting for Darryl to listen.
Well, I know I'm on the circumblife board and there's multiple um, organizations that deal with you know, opioid use and whatever side is known.
Some of the, some of the uncertainty is, as it, yeah, in this first round of litigation, the county's anticipated share of the next decade or two was going to be somewhere, you know, close maybe three hundred fifty thousand or more in total. And how, how often that would arrive on an annual basis or, or, you know, the distribution of the amounts kinda in some, some way dict will dictate what we can do with the money if we wanted to bank it for a while and then spend it on something more sizable after we've had it accumulate for a while. But now that there's additional litigation, maybe that's gonna open up more possibilities. So man, I think it, it's not burning a hole in our pocket, let me put it that way. I'd rather have a, you know, better, clearer picture as to how much really is the big picture we're looking at.
Okay.
It's good. Any other business? Here none, any public comments? Darryl, the sheet's in front of me, anybody sign up? Nope, I have no public comments. I can answer German or excess. Nope, I have no public comments. I pass for German or excess.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, and move seconded all, fair say I.
Hi.